We'll give it a minute as folks filter in here. All right, we'll get started here. Hello, everyone, and thank you for tuning into tonight's Madison School Board Forum with the four candidates whose names are on this spring's ballot. A special thank you to those CAP Times members who are with us tonight as well. I'm Scott Gerard, and I'm the CAP Times K-12 Education Reporter, one of your co-moderators for tonight's event. There are three seats up for election this spring. Seat three has two candidates on the ballot, Shepard Joyner and Laura Simkin. Ali Muldro, the incumbent school board president, is running for seat four, while Nichelle Nichols is running for seat five. Moderators tonight will ask questions directed at individual candidates, and others will have a few opportunities to offer rebuttals to the questions they'd like input on. First, I'll pass it off to my co-moderator to introduce herself.
Thanks, Scott. My name is Taylor Kilgore. Like Scott said, I'm the co-moderator here. I am the managing editor at Simpson Street Free Press, Dane County's all-academic student-run newspaper. I grew up as a student working at Simpson Street since I was in eighth grade, and I'm a graduate of UW-Madison Journalism School.
All right.
Also, sorry, I'll stop there. I just also wanted to thank you all for being here. I really, we really appreciate it. I think this is going to be an awesome forum, and I'm really excited to get started, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Taylor. So we'll start with opening statements. I did a random drawing earlier today to determine the order. So Ali, you're up first, and you have two minutes.
I want to thank everybody who's joining us tonight. My name's Ali Muldro, and I am the co-executive director of the Gay Street Alliance for Safe Schools of Wisconsin, and I am currently the school board president for the Madison Metropolitan School District's Board of Education. I'm running for school board because I love this community. I was born and raised in Madison, and I've worked in education since I was 19 years old. I love our students and our educators and our schools. And our educators are, you know, some of the best teachers I've ever had in my life, still work for this district. I think at this moment, you know, when I ran the first time, I talked a lot about kind of my three main areas of focus, which were arts every day. And I'm so grateful to say that we've expanded opportunities in the arts. We've expanded creative expression as early as 4K, and we've also expanded 4K itself. I'm so proud to say that we have unified our community and had two historic referendums happen during a time when people were sending their kids to school virtually, and our community still chose to invest in a way we have never had and in a way that will define schools for generations. You know, by voting yes to our referendums and investing in our facilities and our operations. I'm also really proud to say that our board has taken on the inequities of our district head-on and that we have, you know, been really fighting over the course of the last three years to have the kinds of conversations that allow for us to close the opportunity gap in our district. And the opportunity gap is not just about race. It is not just about gender. It is not just about, you know, what it means to grow up in poverty in this community. The opportunity gap is also about what it means to be affluent in this community. And so really taking on what it means to extend the same kind of opportunities to our young people for all of our students is part of why I'm running again and part of why I hope you vote on April 5th.
Thank you, Ali, very much. Nichelle, you're up second, and you've got two minutes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you so much for joining us tonight on what is one of our first spring-like evenings. So thank you for making the choice to be here. I decided to run for school board because, like Ali, I care deeply about this community. I care deeply about our public schools being the heart of our city and our community. I also was born and raised here. I'm a graduate of the school district. I'm a proud mother of four sons who have recently graduated from the district. And I also am bringing to the table six years of experience working in MMSD as a former administrator, leading the work for family youth, community engagement, equity, and community partnerships. So I feel like I bring a unique view to the board seat in that I know the inside workings of the district. I understand what administration often brings to the board for approval and discussion and debate. And I believe that that will give me a running start as I come onto the board. I'm also really thinking critically about some issues that I think are really important. One is, we have a newer administration who has been leading pretty much through COVID-19 and is at a point of setting a new strategic direction. And so I feel like it's really important to have board members who are ready to weigh in on that. I also believe that we are seeing declining enrollment. We have a real issue with staff turnover, as you all probably know. And so retention and our overall hiring and comprehensive plan to keep employees feeling valued and respected is something that I feel really critical about. And of course, our learning environments need to be conducive for our teachers to teach and our students to learn. So those just name a few of the things that I come into the seat being really passionate and concerned about. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nichelle. Laura, you're up third, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm so glad to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself and answer your questions. I'm running for school board because of the challenges our district is facing. Challenges including teacher retention and staffing shortages, safety issues, and issues that have either been brought about or have been exacerbated by the pandemic with the achievement gap. I think these challenges are deeply impacting families, students, and our staff. I do believe, like all of you, very deeply in quality public education, and I know we can overcome these challenges. I'm bringing with me two important perspectives. First, my wife and I are parents of a senior at East High School. And second, my expertise and experience in early childhood education. I've worked in early childhood education for more than 30 years. And during that time, I've worked as a teacher, an administrator. I've worked in advocacy and policy and curriculum development. And what that means is that I do understand how policy decisions that are made at a board level will impact what happens in the classroom. I believe incredibly deeply in the power of quality early childhood education and know that early childhood education can lead to later success. And every day, our schools are dealing with the impact of our students' first years. And the absence of that quality early learning experience can often lead to the need for schools to have significant supports. And so, you know, that's part of my background. As a parent, I also understand the struggles that our teachers and our staff are having because I see firsthand what's going on. And I recognize that we have incredibly resilient, skilled teachers, and many of them are overwhelmed right now, and they're desperately asking for support. I do believe that we can come together and work with a common purpose to make a positive difference at this time in Madison schools, and that's why I'm running, and that's what I plan to do.
Thank you very much, Laura. And finally, Shepard, you have two minutes.
First, I want to thank you all so much for bearing with the mask here. I am inside of a building which requires them for the safety of children, so I will be keeping it on for the forum tonight. My name is Shepard. I'm running for school board because I believe in stepping up for my community. And I understand how policy decisions affect not only the students but school staff. As someone growing up in public education, as a multiply marginalized person in public education, specifically as a disabled person and as a neurodivergent person navigating the public school system, I understand how much equality and accessible education can have a massive impact on students and their families. And speaking as a professional through my work with the Whoopin' Soccer Program, which is run by the University of Wisconsin, I've had the opportunity to not only work very closely with school staff in a number of MMSD elementary schools, but also had the opportunity to not only develop curriculum and develop policy on the fly, but also to be able to sort of be plugged into complex scenarios and be able to move quickly towards a solution that has the best possible outcome for all parties involved. And I believe that that has provided me with the opportunity to utilize these sales must positions. And I will leave it at that.
Thank you all very much for that start. We'll move on to questions now. And as a reminder to the candidates, you'll have 90 seconds to answer a question that'll be directed to you. Any of the other candidates, if you're interested in following up on their answer or answering the question yourself, please raise your hand, and Taylor and I will be watching for that. And we will give you one minute to give a rebuttal. And then the candidate who gave the original answer can also have a 30-second follow-up to that rebuttal if they so choose. So the first question is directed to Ali. "The school board is expected to vote on adopting a new literacy curriculum next week before the next term begins. What will the school board's role be in ensuring successful implementation of that new curriculum?" And you have 90 seconds.
I think that's a really excellent question, Scott. I think, you know, the school board's role in examining the curriculum we bring in and how it benefits all of our young people means that the school board has to do an extensive amount of our own research. And we also have to be willing to ask real questions about the impact that's anticipated and the evidence that supports that impact. I also think, you know, the school board has to, you know, think beyond any singular act of curriculum or any singular material to the professional development that our teachers get, to what are, you know, what are kind of a wraparound approach to learning how to read is and how we celebrate reading, and also what that means for, you know, all of our kids. We have, you know, students who we are constantly modifying what our approach to learning looks like to meet their very individual and specific needs. And I think the pandemic has demonstrated how agile of a district we really can be in the interest of one another's children. I think that the board has to take a great deal of responsibility in, you know, following through on progress, right? And that's, I think, one of the reasons why it's important to have board members, you know, be in it for the long haul. It's one of the reasons I want to, you know, both be part of the board that passes and discusses this curriculum, but also part of the board that ensures our students are seeing the results and the outcomes that our community deserves and our children need to be successful.
Thank you. I didn't see any raised hands for rebuttals. Is that right? All right, then we'll move to our next question.
All righty. So this next question is directed to Nichelle. And again, after this, anyone can raise their hand to rebuttal if they would like. So in a press conference at the state Capitol in 2020, just before the pandemic, attendees like parents, teachers, educators, administrators, school board members raised an alarm about the low reading levels among children in the state around the country. And in Wisconsin, you know, more and more schools are adopting science of reading principles. And Madison, a reading task force recently submitted recommendations to Dr. Jenkins and the board. So the question is, have you reviewed the task force recommendations? And more generally, what are your positions regarding reading instruction and science of reading?
Thank you for that. I did review the task force recommendations when they first came out. Generally, they seem still general. So, you know, I think for me, what I've been listening for over the last few months has been, one, the curriculum adoption. So, you know, I was paying a lot of attention to hearing the recommendations for the suggested curriculum that would be adopted, the implementation, and really the criteria around professional learning was one thing that stood out to me around the curriculum adoption because the science of reading also asked a lot of our educators to embark upon professional learning called letters. And I think that the thinking at the time was that the letters training would be offered elementary and then some secondary, like middle or high school grades, and that folks would complete that, and then that would be a great foundation to then adopt the curriculum and be able to implement that. So my, I think my question coming in, Taylor, is not sure where we stand with the letters professional learning. How many educators were actually able to complete that? And as we move into the next school year, what will be the negotiation and conversation around how much professional learning time is available for curriculum adoption and implementation as well as letters?
Thank you, Nichelle. And I see Ali. I think you're the only one. What's your hand raised? So you can go ahead with your rebuttal for one minute.
Thank you so much. And I just want to take this opportunity to talk about the difference between our children's ability and our children's test scores. I think so often we try to encapsulate our students' abilities by looking to test scores. And I do think, like, as somebody who's worked with our children as writers and as poets, as a young person who grew up, you know, working for the Simpson Street Free Press, I think oftentimes we are creating an environment where our young people are being reduced to a test score, to a number, and that doesn't actually tell you enough about our young people. And so if we want to change outcomes, if we want to change the conversation about young people, we have to be cognizant of the fact that our kid's ability is far beyond what any test can represent. And we have to, you know, start having this conversation in a more expansive way.
Thanks, Ali. Any other rebuttals? Otherwise, Nichelle, feel free to speak for 30 more seconds if you'd like. Otherwise, we'll move on to the next second as a question.
Well, I'll just say I appreciate what Ali just said. I mean, I know as a parent of four black boys in the Madison schools, when I got standardized test scores back that often showed that my children may not be yet proficient, it was a hard reality, and it also, I think, had a negative effect on my children being able to think positively about their abilities. So I think there's a balancing act in us wanting to be mindful of where children are, how they are learning, how they are growing, and at the same time, also leaving room open for their future selves to kind of blossom and grow.
Thank you all very much. The next question is going to be for Shepard. "Attracting and maintaining teachers is a challenge for schools across the country, and Madison's no exception. What would you do as a school board member to ensure Madison can bring in strong new teaching candidates while also retaining those who are already here?"
I love this question. So I'd like to start out with investing in a really, in a decent mentorship and induction program so that teachers and school staff who are established in the school district have an opportunity to start generating close working relationships with incoming school staff right off the bat. And when I say that, I want to also make it abundantly clear that I will never ask for more labor without providing more compensation because I understand that fair compensation is a huge, huge contributor to the teacher retention, the school staff retention issue in the nation in general. So I would never want to be asking our school staff to do more work for the same amount or less compensation. Beyond that, I would love to see focus and investment in improving the quality of life in the workplace for our school staff, including mental health support for our school staff. And I would also love to just see in general an investment of resources directly to school staff with their autonomy in mind so that they can be making the decisions about what it is that they need to be most successful and most supported.
Thank you. And I again didn't see any rebuttals, correct? All right, we'll move on to the next question then.
Okay, so this next question here. Considering the Office of Civil Rights Investigation around access to advanced learning, and sorry, this is for you, Laura. So considering the Office for Civil Rights Investigation around access for advanced learning and consequent agreements between MMSD and OCR, how does a policy of eliminating standalone honors classes fit with that resolution agreement, which promises to increase access to the advanced learning opportunities specifically for students of color?
So I am not familiar with that, so I'll have to investigate that and find out more. But I'm happy to talk about the honors classes and the decisions that may or may not be made around them. I think that our honors classes offer an experience for our students that is different than the general ed classes because in honors classes, the content is offered more deeply and often more swiftly than in a general ed class. And so I don't believe that you can replicate that experience in a general education class. What I would advocate for is to continue to increase outreach to all of our students who could benefit from information being offered at a quicker pace and that are interested in going more deeper into content so that they will be participating in that experience as well.
Thank you. And then I see Ali raise her hand.
Yeah, so when you're talking about that lawsuit specifically, you have to acknowledge that we were actually cited for not engaging students in all five areas of advanced learning. So that includes the performing arts and leadership. And part of what I've done over the last eight years in my role at G-Safe is taught a class called Foundations of Leadership at the University of Wisconsin that is, you know, for, based in the experiences of LGBTQ youth of color, right? And that was explicitly designed to be inclusive of all students. I think, you know, making sure our classes offer rigor to everyone and that every student is recognized for their gifts and desegregating opportunities with our schools is really important to me. And part of the reason that's important to me is because I grew up at a time where you had, you know, segregated special education, where students were in self-contained special education, and students who learned differently were constantly separated from one another. And that sent us really clear messages about who was intelligent and who was important and who wasn't. And that has been racialized in our district throughout history, and it's something we have to confront and do something about.
Thanks, Ali. All right, Laura, any last words for 30 seconds?
Yeah. I think that it is incredibly important as a district that we maintain choice for students in the classes that we're offering. I have been receiving calls from families, from parents, pretty regularly since I embarked on this adventure. And one of the things that they're sharing with me is that many of them are thinking about moving out of district. And that is because their most important issues are that they have a safe environment for their child and that their child is going to have academic rigor. And sometimes academic rigor is going to look differently, appropriately different for some children than for others. And I think that we need to maintain an offering in which information is offered more deeply and at a quicker pace for those that it is appropriate to receive that information in that way.
All right, thank you. We can go on to the next question then.
All right. And this next question is for you, Nichelle. We're not going in the same order again, so keeping everybody on their toes. "During a forum in February sponsored by Grumps and the Eastside Progressives, the candidates were asked about learning loss during the pandemic and how the district would determine which students need intervention. With the school districts no longer using MAPS scores here, what do you think is the best way to measure student progress, especially in reading and math? You have 90 seconds."
Yeah, well, I do, I think that overall, there has been a pretty, a pretty, I don't know what the right adjective is. There's been a lot of, I think, emphasis on assessment in terms of monitoring how students are. And what I have heard from teaching staff and families is that it is felt a bit much that the students are spending more time in assessments than perhaps in learning or having social, emotional time. So I think one of the things that we would want to think about is, and I've heard that this is coming forward from the administration, is what is maybe a more streamlined assessment approach that doesn't overwhelm students, doesn't overwhelm teachers, but still gives us information? And I also think teachers all the time are thinking about ways to assess where students are based on the unit, the lessons that they're teaching. And so I think we're going to have to find what that right balance is. And yeah, I think we just need to find the right balance.
Thank you. And I believe, again, no rebuttals to that. Is that correct? All right. If so, we're going to do a break of the bigger questions and move to a quick lightning round here. So some really short questions. I think we'll go in the same order we did for the opening statements here, just to keep it smooth. So Ali, Nichelle, Laura, Shepard. So the first question is, what is your favorite book?
Oh, that's a really, really difficult question. I would say my favorite book is probably, If Beale Street Could Talk, James Baldwin, but also The Color Purple. And then also, because you didn't like play specific, so I'm going to say A Raisin in the Sun, too.
So for me, a book that I've been reading recently, which I don't know if it's a favorite, but one that, like, it keeps me in this really imaginal space about what we can be and who we can become and what we can build, is Emergent Strategy by Adrienne Marie Brown. Yeah, like, every time I read that book, I am just, like, inspired to think about how we can design and build something different. So that's kind of one of my more recent reads.
I think it's my turn. I find it impossible to answer this question. There's too many good books. I'll say a few that I've read, you know, probably half a dozen times or more. I love historical fiction. So Shogun is there. Like, pre-historical fiction, Clan of the Cave Bear is on my list. Professionally, I get great joy out of reading boring things like Developmentally Appropriate Practice by the National Association for the Education of Young Children. So I'll throw those out there.
All right. Well, I think I'm going to break the well-read habit here and say that I'm not much of a book reader, but I think my two all-time favorites are All That Is Bitter and Sweet, which is Ashley J. But my, I think my two all-time favorites are All That Is Bitter and Sweet, which is Ashley Judd's memoirs. Changed my whole perspective on like the world. And then The Bell Jar, which I read in high school and it was the first time I ever experienced reading a narrative book and wanting to consume anything that author had ever touched. And I'll always cherish that and The Bell Jar for it.
A lot of good answers, and I have to add to my own reading list now, I think, based on some of those answers. So the next lightning round question is, who was your favorite teacher? And Ali, we'll start with you again.
Oh, man. I think that's, that's a really hard question, but I've, I've often talked about like the educator who changed my life was Amanda Postel, and she was an after-school tutor who worked with me in Hoven Tood Mas at Sherman Middle School. And she was the first person who ever made me feel intelligent.
I think I'm going to go with one of my high school English teachers, Carolyn Lazar. And the reason why she was one of my favorites is I was notorious for turning in all assignments late, okay? And she had a really easy to understand rubric, which was every day that you turn in this paper late, I'm going to mark you down some points, or I'm going to mark you down a grade. And I, I tried to be motivated, but I was always writing it up to the last minute and turning in papers late. But the thing that was amazing is I would submit this paper, and she would still read it and comment all in the margins and give me exclamation points when I had made an amazing point, or circle something where she wished I had developed that idea more. And the grade unfortunately would normally be marked down enough that it wasn't very good, but like I could see that she saw me as a writer, like she understood that I knew the ideas. And I, I never felt less than because I wasn't able to meet the deadline or show up the way she expected me to. And so that really, it was, it was just a great opportunity to feel seen and to, and to get like feedback that helped me grow.
So I'm going to actually answer my favorite teacher. Her name is Susan Stern. She worked at Lapham Elementary and she was my son's first and second grade teacher. And I had a chance, I volunteered in the schools all the way through fourth grade when he told me to stop coming. But up until then, I was there. And Susan Stern was the most amazing teacher I've ever seen. She was able to run four or five different curriculum pods simultaneously on her own, while also doing things like having music in the background. There was this one song that I cannot forget because it just epitomizes to me why we live in Madison. And it was a song that went, "In 1492, Columbus sailed, the ocean blew. He thought he discovered America, but he didn't because people were already there." And so all these children were, were learning, whatever they were learning, they were also listening to this music in the background. And it was, she had these CDs and they were just beautiful. And the, the love that she provided to them and the incredible law education that she provided.
I would have to say that my all-time favorite teacher, also a high school English teacher, Ms. Brandt. I was also notorious for turning things in late or oftentimes just plain not at all. But in high school, I was a voracious reader and English was my favorite subject. So I would always be ahead of class when it came to the book reading and always the first person to stick their hand in the air when it came to the discussion. And then I would never do the essays and I would never do the worksheets. And for the final of my sought, like my junior year, yeah. She took me out of the classroom during the last day, it was that, like the day of the deadline for this essay, pulled me out of the classroom, sat me down at a computer in the library and said, "I know you can write me an A in 45 minutes. Write me an A right now." And I wrote an A about Boo Radley and bullying. Came up with an essay on the fly, turned it out in 45 minutes, printed it, turned it in within like five minutes of the class ending. When I got it back, she gave me a B. And she said, "I would have given you an A if you had turned it in on time." And I'll never forget that because she gave me that opportunity and just said, you know, "Heck it, go out there and write me the essay because I know you're not going to do it if you don't do it right now." And it worked.
Thank you all so much for sharing all of those. This is the last lightning round question. What was your favorite subject in school?
I'm so grateful that you're asking this question because it allows me to talk about the teachers I didn't get to mention in the other question. Tracy Wagner in, in English changed my life. Esme Swall, Jessica Hatz, the, the Arts and Ideas, the, the teachers who really gave me a space to think for myself and gave me, you know, access to worlds that I had never been to. I grew up in poverty and I didn't grow up traveling. I didn't grow up, you know, getting to have kind of a variety of lavish experiences. And so having teachers introduce me to poetry and introduce me to philosophy and broaden my horizons from English and history and, and, you know, those, those are moments in the classroom that I'll treasure forever. And teachers that I, I love with my whole heart. Oh, Tara Affalter too. I'm like, wow, yeah, thank you for that question.
All right, so when I was in high school, I was really active in DECA, which is the Distributive Education Clubs of America. And I took all courses that were in, I don't know if it was like Consumer Ed or Marketing, but all of those courses. I, and I absolutely loved them. I also enjoyed English a lot. And I have to also say, I know this is not formally a class, but what I also loved about school were all of the opportunities for me to tap in to the artistic side of myself as a, as a student learner. So the fact that our school had school plays and musicals and I was able to like audition for those and be surrounded by my peers who were amazing singers and musicians was also a really motivating experience for me in school.
I think social studies was always the most fascinating for me. I love to learn about where we've been and why we were there and then where we are now and to connect the dots and then use that to imagine where we could go. And so, and I had fantastic social studies teachers throughout, throughout my years. And so I, I think that's probably it.
Yeah, my freshman and sophomore history teachers were the first adults who I could see treated teenagers like whole people and not like three-quarters of a person in like a trench coat. And so that fostered in me a really genuine interest in history and social studies. For a lot of similar reasons, I loved learning about where we had been and seeing, especially drawing parallels of where we have been to what we're doing now. And beyond that, I was fortunate enough to go to Verona, which has a theater education program. It's very small, like two classes, but I loved that because it gave me that opportunity to be spending my time at school, really focusing in on something that, as it turns out, I still use those skills to this day, just as much as I use math and science and English.
All right. Well, thank you for that. That was really fun. I really enjoyed hearing your responses to those questions. Now it's time to get back to the, to the tough ones here. We are going to start actually with Laura for this one. And again, you will have 90 seconds to respond. So what does safety mean in MMSD schools? And how would you work toward reaching that on the board?
Thank you for that question. I think that there's two types of safety that we've been talking about recently. One is COVID safety and one is physical other safety. And I'm going to talk about the second one right now. I think that, so when I'm on the board, if I'm on the board, my intention is to have a short-term plan and a long-term plan. And I'm hoping we can develop those together. And so short-term, what safety looks like to me is that we are responsive right now to the safety incidents that are happening in our schools, primarily in our high schools. And that we take whatever actions are necessary in order to be able to make sure our students are in safe environments. And probably the first place to go with that is to start by asking our principals and our teachers exactly what they need because they know what they need. And so I think we can start right there and listening to them. And as a, on the board, you know, we allocate resources, so we figure out how to get them what they need right now to make sure we're in, where our students are in safe environments. On a long-term basis, safety, I think, becomes a culture. And that develops around using restorative justice practices for a long time. I can tell I'm going to run out of time to say this, but I'll give part of my, my answer. It's, it's about making sure that we have the mental health support in our programs, in our, in our schools so that we are, we're able to help students before safety issues are occurring. And I'm out of time, so I'll stop there.
Thank you. Ali, go ahead.
I think this is an incredibly important question to ask, and I'm so grateful for you all for talking about safety. I think our current stance as a board on safety is a search for solutions that do not harm or criminalize any students and that creates schools that give young people the opportunity to recover from their mistakes and repair harm. I think, you know, we're, we're in, in a moment right now where we're really shifting what we're, we're willing to subject our young people to. And for a long time, our district has subjected our students of color and our students with disabilities, and particularly our students of color with disabilities, to the harshest available punishments. I've worked as security in our district. I worked in our Dane County Juvenile Detention Center for 14 months. Our, our practices around discipline have disproportionately harmed our students of color. And we can't ignore that. We have to engage in a process of truth and reconciliation. And we have to do things we haven't done before. If we want to solve the achievement gap and we want to give opportunities to all students, we have to engage in a process that allows for us to, you know, address and disrupt disparities in discipline and in academic success.
Okay, thanks, Ali. And Laura, if you, you can go ahead if you want to keep going.
Thank you. I think it's absolutely critical that we deal with what's in front of us right now while we are working towards making a better system. Right now, we have a lot of safety incidents happening in our schools and they need to be addressed now. We can't wait for the better system to be put into place. We have students that are in our schools right now. And I am absolutely, positively in support of creating a better system. But we need to make sure that right now, our students are in places where they are safe and where they feel safe.
Okay. Oh, do I see, sorry, someone had their hand up, maybe?
I did.
Okay.
Is it okay for me to go? Because I'm kind of out of order. Okay, okay. So, you know, again, I also feel like this is a really great question. To me, safety means how are we looking at psychological well-being, emotional and social safety? And so for me, I would want to look at a couple of things. One is what revisions might we need to consider around the behavior education plan? Not getting rid of a stance around young people learning from, from opportunities, but what do we know now that perhaps we didn't know pre, pre-pandemic? So I think there should be an emphasis on really going back to the behavior education plan and figuring out what needs to shift in that, if anything. I also think that because we have been so understaffed, I think that the hiring and the retention of adults in our buildings is a critical aspect of safety. You need enough adults in our classes and in our buildings to be able to tend to students. Okay, I see Scott. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other rebuttals before we move on to the next question? Okay, I think we're good, Scott.
All right. The next question is directed to Shepard. So with the return of full-time in-person learning for the 2021-22 school year in MMSD, the district has also provided virtual learning opportunities for some students and families that requested it. What do you view as the future of virtual learning in MMSD? How can it best be used? You have 90 seconds.
First and foremost, frankly, I would love to see virtual learning as something that is offered with little to no conditions to students, quote unquote indiscriminately. The feedback that I've gotten, especially from families of students with disabilities and special needs, is that virtual learning is an option for them that keeps them and their families safe and engaged that might not be afforded to them should the focus return strictly to in-person. And I know as for myself, growing up in sort of more of the digital age, when I was in middle and high school, virtual learning was something that I was much more interested in, that would have been much more accessible to me, given my body and brain. That did cost me a lot of learning, that I did not have access to it. So I'd love to see virtual learning have a more focused investment. And I would also love to see not, I would not like to see that investment and focus be taken away from in-person by any means. I am a firm believer in the expansiveness of our resources and our possibilities. So I think that if we're, if we can really focus in on centering those values and making decisions that create more opportunities for virtual learning and investing in the future of virtual learning, I think that that could create even more possibilities for the future.
All right. I again, don't believe I saw any rebuttals. I'm getting all the questions without rebuttals tonight. Y'all are making it easy on me and hard on Taylor. So Taylor, you can go ahead with the next question.
All righty. So this question is going to be directed to Ali. The district recently applied for waivers from state requirements on attendance and structural minutes and educator effectiveness evaluations citing the ongoing effects of the pandemic and challenges of taking attendance for virtual learning. Would you consider approving waiver requests on these subjects in the future years? Why or when not?
I think that the last two years have been exceptional in a lot of ways. Taylor, you were around for the last time I ran for school board. That's like the fun part of being, of being locals. And you asked me a lot of questions, but one question you did not ask me was, what would you do, Ali, if a global pandemic shut down schools for a little, you know, for, for close to a year? And so we have to acknowledge that something enormous happened to our, to our young people, to our world. And that we have had to learn to be compassionate towards one another and agile in ways we have never been before. This is one of the reasons learning loss is such a disappointing term for me. My, my seven-year-old can use Zoom better than I can. She can use a computer and initiate her own learning in ways that I would have never been able to when I was seven years old. She has, you know, gained so much maturity and understanding and medical information over the course of this pandemic. She's learned how to stand up for her friends, safety. She's learned how to build inclusive communities online. I think moving forward as I think moving forward, as this pandemic continues to shape our reality, I am, I'm going to continue to be humbled as a leader. I think relying on our medical experts and, and really looking to, to folks who understand the consequences of this pandemic to make decisions is part of our role now as board members. And it's, it's something I take incredibly seriously.
Thank you for that. Michelle, I see your hands.
Yeah, the only thing that I would add is I was working in the district until June or through June of 2021. And I do know that there were significant efforts to really focus on attendance. There were efforts to try to reach students and families and really try to get to the, the root issues around attendance. I think that there were a lot of lessons learned about who was connecting and who wasn't. And that was particularly as things were mostly virtual. But even as we had phased back in initially for the kind of the half-day or couple of day approach. And so I do think that, I don't think this is about the waiver necessarily, which was your original question, but as we are coming back to what we hope will be kind of more of normal conditions in the environment for us to be in school, I do think that we will want to hear more of a plan about how we want to make sure that all of our students as possible are, are feeling like they can get to school and are, are showing up.
Thank you. Any other rebuttals? Okay.
All right, we are down to our final two questions here for, for the evening. So this one is to Shepherd again. The pandemic has left many students facing new mental health challenges. What can schools do to help students navigate their mental health amid the ongoing pandemic?
Fantastic question. Speaking from experience as a student who is navigating the public school system with some pretty, what people would call profound mental illness. When I was in my sophomore year of high school, I only attended half-days of school because I was in intensive outpatient care for my mental health. So for me, the thing that made the greatest difference for me was having a school system, having a team of administrators and a team of school staff who were willing to be educated on what I needed, who already had some education on what it meant to be providing education to students with mental health needs, with mental health illnesses, as well as having a school that was already prepared to help me and to support me, a school that was willing to be flexible with my needs. I know from experience, I've gone to high schools that were not nearly as understanding for my mental health needs as other schools have been. So creating a sort of, creating a culture that is supportive, that is flexible and accommodating in general makes a world of difference. And beyond that, investing in mental health first aid training for school staff, as well as investing in particular school staff being trained so that they can train other school staff so that we have sort of a rolling education going on. And again, not doing any sort of asking of extra labor without providing extra compensation for our staff.
All right. And again, no rebuttals for my final question. All right. We'll move to the final question of the, of the evening then.
All right. I'm sure there'll be rebuttals for this one. So as, as we kind of get back to slowly back to normal, whatever normal looks like and more settled and how can we, how, sorry, this is for Laura. Excuse me. So how can we work to essentially like reset and, you know, start really focusing? How would you want to start really focusing on the achievement gap and opportunity gap in the district? And, you know, I think equally as important, how will you ensure the board and administration is transparent during that process to kind of getting really back to ensuring that we're addressing the opportunity gap in MMSD?
That's a huge question for ninety seconds. I'll do my best. I think that we, one of the impacts of the pandemic has certainly been that we have lost a lot of teachers and we can actually anticipate that we're going to lose quite a few more. And so one of the things that we can be absolutely prioritizing is making sure that in our hiring processes, that we are hiring as many teachers and staff of color as possible. So that students are being taught by individuals that, that they can relate to, that represent, you know, that they can look up to and they can see themselves in. I think that's incredibly important. We do need to really make sure that we're doing some careful assessment to make sure that we know which students we need to be helping right now the most. And then putting into place staffing so that we can be supporting our students that most need us intensively. And so that's, that's another piece that we could be putting together. We truly, I think that all of this gets wrapped together. But another piece that we can be doing is making sure that we are providing many opportunities for families to be involved in the schooling of, of their students. And making sure that all families, especially families of color, are feeling welcomed within our schools and feeling like it's a place for them. And now I'm out of time. So I'll stop.
Hey, no rebuttals.
You want one, don't you, Taylor?
Come on, you know.
All right. Well, with no rebuttals, then we will move to the closing statements. And you will each have two minutes for your closing statement and we'll go in the same order we did for opening statements. So that means Ali, you're first up.
I want to thank you all so much for hosting this forum this evening. Thank you, Cap Times, and thank you, Simpson Street Free Press. I, I'm excited for my second term and for all that we can do as a community. And I am so grateful for this opportunity to serve as a member of the Board of Education. I think the, the fight for arts every day, the fight for schools that make, you know, our kids aware of the best part of themselves is still happening. And I am committed to being a part of it. I'm committed to listening to our teachers and to our community and being available as a member of this school board. And I'm very grateful to get to serve and I hope that you all vote for me, Ali Maldro, on April fifth or early at your local, local library slash absentee that ballots have just started to be distributed. So no matter what, folks, make sure you vote. And I'm, I'm so grateful to be running for the love of learning and to get to serve our community. There's a lot of, of really important work to do right now. And I'm grateful to get to be part of the board doing it.
All right. Michelle, you're up next.
Thank you, Scott. So a couple of things that I did mention in my opening statement is a little bit about the work that I do. So I currently am working at a organization called National Equity Project where I am working as an educational consultant and coach to public school districts that are part of a bigger network. And I have been really fortunate to be able to work with public school districts that are on the East Coast in Michigan, even one out in California, and just being able to see the landscape of what our public school staff and leaders, teachers are dealing with. And so I feel like that is a lens that I will bring into the role is some perspective about what's happening here. How do we take care of our, our own district, but also some perspective around what else is happening? I feel like I'm, I'm so dedicated to this district and this community. I know that we have some significant challenges in front of us like staff burnout, staff shortages, teacher retention and morale. We have an enrollment that is declining. We have a newer administration. And I feel like I'm, I'm going to come into this seat with eyes wide open. I'm going to bring my full self of being a previous MMSD administrator, a previous community-based partner, a former parent and, and a citizen. And I'm going to bring that to the seat. I'm going to ask the questions that need to be asked. And I'm also though, going to offer solutions and suggestions that I think will make this administration stronger. Because our district needs to remain as strong as possible. We have too many students and families who are counting on our public schools as being the place that is going to help their students thrive and succeed. And so that is why I'm running. And I also hope you will come out and vote April fifth, Michelle Nichols on the ballot. Thank you.
All right, Laura, you're up next. Two minutes.
Thank you. Scott and Taylor, I want to thank you so much for this opportunity and for the good and the hard questions. I have been talking, I've been approached by so many parents and teachers over the last few months. And what I hear is that teachers want the respect of the community and they want the support of the school district. And they want to stay. They want to stay and teach. And so I think it's our responsibility as a community and as a school board to do everything we can to give our teachers the tools that they need so that they can do their best work. And from parents, what I'm hearing is they want to stay in Madison. They really do. Parents value our community so much and they want to be here. And they're seeing all the challenges that we've been talking about tonight. And a lot of parents right now are making really hard decisions around where they want to have their children educated. And the most important things for them is that their children are safe and that they're receiving a rigorous education that will allow them to be successful for later in life. And so I think that as foundational work, that's what we need to focus on. We need to focus on supporting our staff. We need to focus on safe schools and on rigorous education. And that's what I plan to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. And Shepherd, you have the final closing statement of the night.
Thank you all so much for being here. Thank you to the Cap Times and Simpson Street Free Press. It would be an honor and a privilege to be able to utilize my lived experience as a multiply marginalized person as well as my experience working with the Whoop and Soccer Program, not only for the perspective that it gives me as someone who works closely with school staff, but also for the experience that it gives me as someone who works in curriculum and instruction, someone who works directly with educators, some of the educators who are building the future of not only education, but arts-integrated education, as well as my experience working in grassroots organization to build bridges between our communities so that we are all able to work together toward the common goal of creating a brighter, more sustainable, healthier future for our students.
All right. Thank you all so much. I'd like to thank Simpson Street Free Press and Taylor again for their great help in planning and executing this forum and coming up with the great questions. I'd like to thank the candidates for giving us your time and the community your time. And finally, I'd like to thank all of those of you who tuned in and out there. If you are interested in listening to answers again or telling a friend about it, this, we have recorded this event and it will be posted on the Cap Times Facebook. So you've got plenty of time to review before the April fifth election. With that, we'll call it a night. Thank you all so much.
Good night, y'all.
Thank you so much for hosting this.
Boris, thanks for being here. Thank you.